Here.
Mayor Tootie.
Here. Telephonic meeting, none.
The meeting has been properly posted and noticed.
Public hearings.
Change of zoning B two to B two special use forty-two twenty-four South Kinnick Avenue. Notice is hereby given that the common council of the city of Saint Francis will hold a public hearing in the council chambers Saint Francis Civic Center, thirty-four hundred East Howard Avenue, Saint Francis, Wisconsin, on Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M regarding the request for change of change of zoning from B two general business to B two general business special use, used motor vehicle sales facility at forty-two twenty-five South Kinnick Avenue. The legal description involved in the proposed zoning change is as follows. Forty-two twenty-five South Kinnick Avenue, tax key number five-eight-four-nine-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. A map of the property may be obtained from the con- council through the city clerk's office during regular business hours. Any interested person may be heard at the time of the public hearing.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on the change of zoning for forty-two twenty-four South KK Avenue? Is there anyone that would like to speak for the change of zoning for forty-two twenty-four South KK Avenue? Is there anyone that would like to talk on the change of zoning for forty-two twenty-four South KK Avenue? That portion of the public hearing is closed.
Change of zoning M one to M one special use for forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue. Notice is hereby given that the common council of the city of Saint Francis will hold a public hearing in the council chambers, Saint Francis Civic Center, thirty-four hundred East Howard Avenue, Saint Francis, Wisconsin, on Tuesday, January seventh, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M regarding the request for change of zoning from M one limited industrial to M one limited industrial, special use recycling collection facility at forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue. The legal description involved in the proposed zoning change is as follows. Forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue, tax key number five-nine-three, dash nine-zero-one-nine dash zero-zero-zero. A map of the property may be obtained from the common council through the city clerk's office during regular business hours. Any interested person may be heard at the time of the public hearing.
Is there any person that would like to speak for the change of zoning for forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue? Please state your name, sir.
I'm the owner of the company who's filling out the application. I know if you guys have any questions, I'm here. I'd be happy and eager to answer. We do appliance recycling for companies like Home Depot, Lowe's, uh, Grand Appliances. Is it, well, we're purchasing the whole building, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, correct. Inside, yeah, totally. Everything is inside. Seven-thirty to three-thirty in the afternoon. No.
Uh, what type of um materials do you expect to handle? Uh, you know, any dangerous, caustic, uh, you know, e-waste, that sort of thing? Um, and and what kind of plans do you have to dispose of it responsibly?
No, no, no e-waste because we don't recycle electronics, anything from kitchen, laundry appliances.
Sure, but every uh washing machine, dishwasher, refrigerator has circuitry and and some form of e-waste in it at this point, right?
Yeah, everything is gonna be this, I mean, the way we're doing our uh recycling centers, we dispose everything according to E P A standards.
One more question. What what type of noise do you expect, um, you know, in terms of while you're in operation to, um, you know, be able to be heard by the surrounding area?
Minimum, probably four lifts, that's the only thing, probably the thing that is more, you know, loud is four lifts.
You're not actually taking apart the appliances here. You're actually just collecting the appliances and and putting them on semi-trailers. The actual place where the appliances are taken apart is down in Illinois, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, correct.
So there's no dismantling of any of the appliances here?
No, no, it's not, it's not like a scrapyard, not at all. Especially that building is too small to have that kind of operation. You need to have like a massive building, you want it, just wanted that.
Any further questions?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
For the public, public hearing, change of zoning for forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue, is there anyone else that would like to speak? For the public hearing for change of zoning for forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue, is there anyone that would like to speak? Public hearing is closed. Presentation, none. Citizen comments, none. Consent agenda, is there anyone that would like anything removed?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Recommendation of action from committees, commissions, and boards. Action to be taken from the licensing com- committee, meeting held January seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Don?
Mayor, from this evening's licensing committee, we're looking for a temporary alcohol license for the Cavalier Athletic Association Sixteenth Annual Shoots, one twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six oh-one East Morgan Avenue.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Well, thanks, Don. Action to be taken from finance, none. Action to be taken from marketing, none. Action to be taken from public works, none. Action to be taken from planning commission, draft minutes December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Mayor, upon recommendation from the planning commission, I move to ask for approval of a change of zoning application for forty-forty South Clement Avenue from M- contractor shop and yard, and request the public hearing be set contingent upon compliance of all zoning determinations.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Mayor, upon recommendation of the planning commission, I move at the city vacate the alley at forty-five twenty South Nicholson Avenue.
Second. All in favor?
Go ahead.
And add to the motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution regarding this.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Mayor, upon recommendation from the planning commission, I move for approval for the change of zoning for forty-five twenty and forty-five thirty South Nicholson, from M one to M one special use outdoor storage facility, contingent upon compliant with the Saint Francis codes.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
That's it to me?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Resolutions and ordinances. Resolution regarding non-represented employees' wages and salaries. Mark?
Is this on? They're under discussion and possible action, so we haven't gotten there yet? They're on the resolution. So it would be to introduce and adopt a resolution regarding non-represented employees' wages and salaries.
I can move for that. I thought maybe the mayor wanted some kind of explanation. I will move for the addition and adoption.
This is the annual, this is the annual wage resolution. Um, it's a two-one increase. I second the motion, similar to all the other employees.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Now we're to the-
Discussion on the possible action.
Um, change of zoning application for thirty-seven thirty-seven South Kinnick Avenue.
All right.
Um, thank you, Mayor. So this was presented to the uh, the planning commission at its last meeting. Uh, the proposal is to provide a, a dog park on a paper use uh basis with the remote uh, access provided, uh, no supervision, no uh, uh, by anyone on site, no structures proposed other than fencing. Uh, the planning commission recommended um, uh, approval and scheduling the planning of the public hearing on it. There are, however, uh, multiple hurdles that would need to be accomplished before this could take place. Uh, first of all, is the, is the fact that it doesn't comply with the comp plan, uh, which calls for uh, uh, developments that improve the tax base, given that there's no structure to be, uh, provided. The only uh, uh, improvement would be a fence on, on the property and so uh, this would need to, you would need to have a, a text, change to the comp plan for this area that would allow uh, essentially zero uh, uh, improvements to the, to the tax base. There's no current uh, uh, applicant proposal for a comp plan change, so the, so the council would need to direct staff to proceed to prepare the required text change, uh, and it would require approval by both the planning commission and the council. The second aspect is the, is that it doesn't, the use doesn't actually fit into the zoning code, uh, in that the proposed uh, rezoning is, uh, includes for animal training. Uh, however, there is no actual onsite animal training being provided uh, by the developer. Instead, it would be a passive use, so there would, you know, here again, there would need to be a, a text change to the zoning code that would need to be approved. Uh, so the council would need to recommend uh, a, uh, or the, the planning mission provide a recommendation concerning such a change. Third aspect is that the current fence ordinance does not provide for a fenced uh, an entire yard. Um, you know, the current zoning code, the only property in the city that that has been allowed for is the F B I building, or to comply with federal security requirements, and that was done as part of the P U D. Uh, so there's that aspect of it, and there's also that would, so the zone, uh, excuse me, the fence ordinance would need to be revised to permit not only an entire yard uh, to be fenced in, but it would also need to be modified because uh, our uh, fence setback requirements refer to the front, uh, in terms of the front yard setback, which by definition in that, uh, in the fence code is that in terms of the placement of the building on the property, but there won't be a building, so again, this would require uh, that the council direct the planning commission to provide a recommendation concerning uh, modification. Excuse me, no, I'm, I'm sorry. This does not require planning commission approval. This would be straight up, uh, the council recommending that staff provide text, uh, proposed text changes to the fencing ordinance. Last but not least, the proposal uh, does not meet, currently meet the uh, the city's off-street parking requirements. Uh, the applicants had contemplated that uh, they would be able to utilize uh, on-street parking to meet the recor- the code requirements, and so they were advised that they would need to revise their plans in order to, uh, to, uh, to meet the provisions in section four fifty-five thirty-eight, the off-street parking provisions. So those are the current uh, issues that are, that are surrounding this. The applicants are here this evening and I believe are, are, would be interested in providing any, or answers to any questions that the council may have.
Anyone have any questions?
No, there's no, there's no boarding, uh, there is no, no grooming is being provided onsite.
But what exactly, what, how exactly is this gonna work? What is the, what is the plan here?
Hi, Mayor. Um, yeah, so the zoning, since, oh, that moves. Uh, so, since there's no zoning code for a dog park, um, when we apply, Mark recommended we apply under this animal training facility as it was kind of the closest that we could get. Um, so, yeah, essentially, it's a private dog park, kind of geared for um, dogs that don't really do well at, at kind of the traditional dog park experience. We have one of those ourselves, uh, and certainly know many people who, whose dogs don't really gel with other dogs. We don't have a fenced yard. Many people, you know, in southeast of Wisconsin don't have a fenced yard, so uh, the idea is just to give these little pups a place to run around, uh, safely contained. Um, logistically speaking, um, it's self-service, so um, the fencing obviously would be uh, comprehensive in ter- in terms of very secure for the dogs, um, and then the kind of technology would allow for online booking. It would be like a numerical code kind of system to allow for entry. Um, time-sensitive code, so uh, your code would only be applicable and, and would only work for the fifty-minute, five-zero, fifty-minute time period that um, you've reserved in advance. Um, if you were to come back, you would get a new code tied to the date and time that you reserved, so that's kind of uh, broad strokes how it works, but-
One, one person in the park for fifty minutes?
Yeah, I would, uh, the term we've been using is like one household of dogs, uh, because if two dogs get along, they're more than welcome, right? Uh, but-
Free dogs, and you take them there?
Yeah, you know, for maybe, for a little upcharge, you know what I mean? Uh, yes, so one household of dogs, so it, kind of by design, there's only gonna be one or two people there, uh, and their dogs just running around and-
Hours of operation, opposed or?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, maybe we would have to consult our little thing, but I think, and we went with like a six A M to nine P M situation, so I mean, our last reservation is that eight to nine P M slot, to kind of catch those before and after work folks. Definitely.
Our goal is to be um, less open and associated here.
Like an embroidery shop on the other side, they both have like nighttime kind of security lighting, so, yeah, we have um, in our application that I'm sure is in whatever documentation y'all got to review, there's a, a lighting plan and things like that, so.
Yeah, already the lighting looks, um, there's gonna be hours kind of, I believe there's three scattered throughout the property. Uh, there's a couple of lower, um, you know, putting on certain little walkways or certain features, um, so.
So how do you monitor somebody that's supposed to be leaving at three-thirty and they decide that they don't wanna leave at three-thirty? And it's all self-monitored. How do you get that individual to leave?
Absolutely. So I think there are a couple of different factors. A, we'll have a security camera there, so we can see people who are coming and going, um, so can see people kind of vice versa who are not going. Uh, I think part of it too is that, kind of knowing the clientele. I think, um, by definition, the people who are booking this understand that their dogs don't like other dogs. Um, and so by s- by not leaving on time, you're running the risk that your dog runs into another dog under the assumption that somebody else is coming at the next uh, reservation slot. And, and I think the type of people who would book this kind of experience would be really ki- again, by definition of seeking this out, respectful of their dog's needs and, um, and I think compliant. That being said, obviously, we have their contact information and can call. We live very close to this property, they could go over there. Uh, they'll also have, you know, like waivers to sign upon booking in terms of following these posted rules and things like that and agreeing, and so, you know, if you don't follow the rules, you can't book anymore. There, there's consequences. So certainly, I'm sure things will come up, but, um-
So we get um, feedback from the remote lock system that we have?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so usually it pings, um, they say their average ping time's like one minute to four minutes, so like, if that's state when at like six-fifty, when they're leaving the booking, and that lock has been not changed, it hasn't changed state during that time, then we can set it.
If it doesn't click back and re-engage, the door's left open, we'll get a notification of that as well. So there's some helpful technology in there too.
So do they act, do they use a key code to exit as well as enter?
Nope.
So then how do you know when they're leaving, other than camera, because I'm not sure you're not gonna be there twenty-four seven watching this camera?
I don't, don't think our full-time gigs would allow that. Um, we will be able to get, I believe, a notification when the door essentially is open to close. I don't think the key code needs to be used in order for that notification to be sent. I understand that, yeah.
Are there, are there any other parks around here in Aubrey like this, or?
Great question.
Like a new concept to me, so.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the question. There are parks like this, but not around here, uh, which is why we're very excited about it. Um, the closest one is in Delafield, uh, which is not ultra-close. Um, it's part of the Humane Animal Welfare Society, uh, kind of organization. Um, it's a very big space, as you can imagine, in Delafield, they have a lot going on. Uh, it is slightly different in that it is not uh,
Secure.
Secure access at all. We, we booked it ourselves and our dog really loved it, but we simply waltzed right in, uh, and anybody could have, could have come in at any time and, um, nobody checked us in or anything like that. So unstaffed, which to me is no big deal, but also unsecured, which I think was um, a little bit concerning. Um, and then there's a couple in Madison, one in Chicago, very expensive. So not an entirely new concept, but um, new in southeast of Wisconsin.
And will you be having any type of liability in terms of this?
Certainly.
Oh, I'll just tell you, I think it's a great idea. Having an aggressive dog, having a place for them to wear out some energy and not have to worry about another dog is-
What about um, w- waste management, uh, if, uh, you know, if you're in a private space and an owner may not feel as socially compelled to clean up after themselves, um, there are two pretty close neighbors who are, you know, businesses, have people coming in and out all day, I can imagine, in a hot summer day. Um, so how are you gonna handle that situation?
Yeah, off the top, um, certainly we will have several waste stations throughout, kind of picturing like a Disneyland situation, like never more than X amount of steps to a trash can kind of thing. Um, but beyond that, I think once we get rolling, it'll be like a morning walkthrough situation, um, just kind of clear the space. Certainly beyond trash too, we wanna make sure it's a safe space and that there's no, you know, best case scenario, no little dog toys left around, worst case scenario, trash, things like that, because like you're saying, people will leave whatever they wanna leave, so um, that's what I envision, um, and then of course we'll be closed as well periodically for, you know, mowing the lawn and taking care of space and things like that, so, um-
It's not the toys that I'm, that I'm interested in.
Yeah. Yes, yes, it's, it is the boo, if I may say, honorary, yes. Understood.
How, how tall would the fences be? Like rigs here, rigs can jump pretty high.
I would-
They're probably easy, yeah, yeah.
Um, I believe that was the hang we were looking at. I think there was some other code that said up to seven foot, but I think that was for a different application. So as of time, this time it's six foot.
We've been trying to reference the code, of course, which is not a perfect decision, as Paul's uh, explained already. Um, ideally, you know, it, it, it's a tricky balance between a high fence for this situation and uh, not cutting off the view to the green space. Uh, I would say minimum six feet, certainly. Hadn't thought about going taller, but it's good to know some dogs can jump up. Okay. Metal? Thoughts? Yeah. Oh, it's kind of the-
We permit chain link fences.
That's the only thing you have to change your code.
Yeah. We don't, we don't currently permit chain link fence.
Well, well, I think, I think what is indicated is, is if the council wants to move forward with this, all these things within the code would have to be changed before the public hearing process could occur within the application, so.
I mean, you could proceed with the public hearing on the application as it stands, however, because it does not meet the comp plan on its face, uh, the, it would be illegal for the council to approve it under state law. So you can't approve an ordinance, a zoning ordinance that violates your own comp plan. So you could proceed with it as it is, but the net, and the result would have to be that the council would have to deny it after, after the public hearing. So, uh, although you're not making a decision on the zoning tonight, because we haven't had the public hearing, it hasn't been noticed, the questions are as far as, you know, the guidance from the council as far as moving forward with all those things that would have to be done in order to permit this uh, application to, uh, to have a possibility of being approved after the public hearing.
I think, I think there's, there's another issue here that we're not maybe addressing, is that uses on vacant lots, um, without principal buildings is limited. And so when you look at, when you look at what you can do with a lot, in other words, we don't allow somebody to build a garage on a lot. They have to build a home or a business on a lot to be able to build a garage. From the, some of the things that they've discussed tonight, you're gonna need an electric meter, so you're gonna have to have a drop. If they have a camera, it's likely to be Wi-Fi, so you're gonna need a modem. Um, so there's gonna be a number of things here, sanitary for garbage, at a minimum, is gonna have to be addressed. So they did ask for an accessory building, but I think it probably is gonna have to be something more than that to deal with all these things, if you're gonna have, especially if you're gonna have to have a modem with Wi-Fi, that's gonna have to be heated building. And so there probably is, and I know that they're trying to do this as, as at low cost as they possibly can. Um, but I think that if, if the council's going to entertain this type of use, there probably should be some sort of building on the site that deals with all these issues um, to, to manage this type of business.
Yeah, so I, I, I think it's a, I, I love the, I love the concept. Um, but I, I don't know if on KK Avenue, um, to do the, the limited improvements that, that make it a little less desirable to go in and build something that, you know, uh, really um, kind of adds to the overall uh, you know, tax base and employment level of the city. Um, you know, this, this could stand in the way of that uh, progress at some point. I'd, I'd be interested in potentially seeing a, you know, this concept executed somewhere else, but I don't know if, if, um, you know, the, the comp plan is the comp plan for a reason. We all agreed that these were the, um, you know, that these were the, the pieces of, you know, like what we were looking for in certain places around the city, um, and to, to change that, um, despite it being a, a great idea, um, it doesn't match kind of what we defined ahead of time as what we, what we looked at for positive development for the city.
My, my only question comes in as to where the, once we adopt and allow fencing in the front yards, as to what that does for the rest of our community. Um, I may then wanna become a hermit and put a fence around my yard, which we don't, kind of which we don't currently allow. Um, how is that gonna affect that? Because I'm sure that there are people that would, I don't know, wanna put up a fence or build a tent in their backyard and or date themselves as mayor, you know? So, that's all I got.
An answer from Paul?
Uh, I, I think we could probably, you know, address it for purposes of a commercial use versus, uh, you know, making it wide open for his residential purposes, which would sadly prevent you from becoming, well, not sadly, it would prevent you from becoming a hermit and much for the betterment of the city as a result, but uh, I think it's, you know, it would be potentially feasible to do it just for commercial uses and make that distinction. Um, but it would, you know, again, open the bottom, let the genie out for purposes of all the commercial properties- Um, but it would, you know, again, open the bottom, let the genie out for purposes of all the commercial properties in the city that would say, hey, I need a fence, and so it becomes difficult to, you know, deciding where to draw the limits on that, so. Same, same issue, but on a different, different, um, basis.
Mark, is there an easement there? It looks like there's utilities back there at the back end of that.
I do not know.
I would assume there's, there's utility easements in there, because at one point this was a residential property. Uh, so presumably there's sewer water, uh, easements into the property.
There's like a substation in the back, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
What would build there anyway with the substation there?
Mark, didn't we discuss a planning commission about a possible time limit on this type of thing?
Well, zoning, zoning does not, the planning commission, when you rezone something, doesn't have to be indefinite. It can be finite, so in other words, you can zone things for a limited period of time. Um, so that you'll, you could allow an underdeveloped use to occur until something maybe is, is more attractive to go there. I mean, it's been a number of years that that property has been vacant. It, it has, it was a house that was under a raisin repair order and the house was torn down. It is zoned for business use, it's not zoned for residential use, it's zoned for business use, so...
Right, that's why the planning commission did act, did feel that this could be looked at by the staff if there was a time limit put on, um, what was happening, so that if something else was going on in the city and that could be used for development in the future. That's, that's basically what the, the committee had looked at.
And there are, there are buildings that, that utilities bring in all the time that are precast concrete building that can be brought in on a truck and dropped in, um, that support cell towers and support utilities that are heated and have all the electrical and modems and whatnot in them. So, there, there is a possibility they could do something like that, um, at a lower cost than building a building and, and having it on-site, so there wouldn't be a, something that they would necessarily have to build if they needed those utilities.
So, Paul, what's the motion we need?
Well, uh, I guess it depends on the, the council's pleasure. I mean, if, like, the, the question is, certainly from the recommendations from the planning commission, you would need to at least schedule the public hearing, uh, on the application. Uh, if you want to first recommend that, or direct staff to, uh, prepare proposed changes to the, the comp plan, the, uh, the zoning code, the fence code, uh, uh, those, and then it would still require a change. We can do that in the interim, uh, and then it would still need to be a change to the proposal to meet the off-street parking requirements, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, to answer, I think, one of, uh, Steve's questions before, excuse me, Alden Wado's questions before, if this were combined with, uh, some other use, so if there were some kind of animal grooming provided on-site, if there were some kind of on-site training on-site, uh, you know, uh, that would address the, the, uh, the zoning code provision. Um, I, I will toss it out for, for what it's worth department after we left. Uh, the planning commission I mentioned to the city administrator that it occurred to me that you could potentially, uh, if you wanted to, you know, um, depends on, obviously, it's, it's a little different than what you're looking at, but it occurred to me that Farm Fleet, when they reopened their walk-in shop facility, they put in a soft-service dog grooming facility, uh, in their parking lot. That would address the, the principal building, it would address the, the on-site grooming, and, um, I don't know how much they, it's, it's not a, it's not a very large building, but it is a principal, you know, I think it could be...
When you say, when you say on-site grooming, you mean like a dog wash?
Yeah, yeah, so...
I mean, that's something that line on the, the main street runs through the city.
Well, again, it, it begs, it begs the question as far, well, it's not a temporary building, it's, it's a permanent building that they put in their parking lot, uh, but I mean, it's, it's, you know, it, it begs the question as to whether or not the use fits the, you know, again, this is a, uh, as, as the city administrator indicated, this is a, you know, a special use, uh, type of thing. And one of the things that when you do get to the public hearing and you do get to the consideration is, is the suitability for the proposed location. So, again, I, 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 you know, I'm, I wanna make sure we're not acting on zoning tonight, because it's, it would be premature to do that. We haven't had the public hearing, and by statute you can't address this, the outright zoning, but... But we have other steps that would have to take place to get to that application, and that's...
Or we can schedule a public hearing.
Well, we can schedule a public hearing, again, it's just that it would be kind of a, uh, exercise in futility sadly for the applicants, and I, you know, I don't wanna have them come up and say, hey, here's the public hearing, and then we have to say, and I have to say, no. You have to say no, uh, under, under the state statute. So, that's why we wanted to put it on for tonight to give you the...
I mean, there's a lot of unknown variables right now that go into this, you know?
There are, you, we'd have to come up with, again, we'd have to, you know, come up with a change to the comp plan, and you have to come up with a change to, changes to the zoning code, and you have to come up with changes to the, to the fence where the insect keeps, you know, Alvin and Brickner from becoming a hermit, but at the same time would allow the, uh, you know, the front yard fence and the...
Likewise, we also don't wanna waste your time, right, in doing all of this as well and keep continuing to move, you know, kick the can down the road, right? So, and, and I'm not super sure that I have a good understanding of this process, but if it is like a, you know, comp plan, if, you know, if this is simply not the right fit in kind of a large-scale way, you know, that's okay, that's okay. It is okay to say that, you know what I mean? I don't, I, ob- obviously, I, I think, you know, we obviously would like to have many purposes here, uh, and we have a lot of great ideas, and I think this could really benefit the community. That seems to go without saying. I think this could be really helpful for dog owners in St. Francis and southeastern Wisconsin. Um, but you would have to really take a chance on us, and I think it sounds like do some work. Um, and, you know, and if it's gonna go to the public hearing or back to the planning commission or whatever and kind of circle back around to, you know, it doesn't fit with the comp plan or something like that, you know, that's okay. Uh, yeah, mm. I just don't wanna waste anybody's time. And I also don't really understand the way forward.
I, I think, I think what we're struggling with here is, is in, within our zoning code, the whole goal is to get development on the lot, because the city doesn't want a vacant lot, right? And so, and I think we understand where you wanna take it. You wanna do it as, at the least amount of cost as you possibly can, just put a fence around it and let people go into this. But I think there's probably gonna have to be someplace in the middle where, where you're going to have to invest a little bit more in this after we've talked it through, than maybe just putting a fence around it and letting people come into it. You're probably gonna have to put something where you're gonna have electric meter drop, you're gonna have to have places for your camera, places for your modem, places for your wifi. So, you're gonna have to bring some utilities in, you're probably gonna have to bring in, um, you know, some, a gas line into the building that, that you're gonna, so there's gonna be some cost here. There's no, I think there's no sense in the city going through a lot of changes to our code if you, as the applicants, aren't willing to come and meet someplace in the middle to say, yes, we're willing to invest maybe more than just putting a fence on it and letting people come here, come in to use it, that we're really interested in doing this and running it as, as a business, but we may have to invest in some of these other things that we've talked about.
Yeah, I mean, that makes perfect sense. I don't feel like I, uh, I don't feel like we've been asked to do that yet, so...
I think that maybe is, that's maybe a que, that's maybe a question that you would, would have to let the council know in order to...
Yeah, do, yeah, do you think, uh, the consensus is, um, we would definitely need a significant building?
Well, I'm not saying you would need a significant building, but you would need something that is gonna hap, because of all those things that you talked about, right?
I understand.
Right, you know, to, to be able to have an electronic gate that you know exactly when they're coming and going and a camera to be able to see the grounds and, and a place to put garbage. And that requires an electric meter drop and, you know, all those things, so... And if you're gonna have a modem, it's gonna have to be in a heated building, and, and our engineer probably can tell you what those types of buildings cost, but they make eight by ten type con, precast concrete buildings that you can place on the site that support those, those types of things. I don't, what, what are we thinking, maybe thirty thousand for a building like that?
For us, what it'll come down to is, um, between the building and the parking on the lot, uh, how much green space remains for the dogs, and I think is kind of the bottom line.
Bill, that, that, Bill? That cost doesn't include the utilities Mark's talking about, correct? So, that would still be the line drop for the electricity, the modem, all those things, so we're exponentially...
Understood, and certainly don't wanna bother y'all with the cost, because we have, you know, our own business plan and finances and all that. It worked out, but...
If I may?
Oh, uh, well, you will be right next door to a bank, so anyway, they may have some interest in, in working with you. Uh, I would, I would recommend at this point, Mr. Mayor, that, that we, that, uh, the council defer the, the, uh, the matter to another meeting, and in the meantime, direct staff to work with the applicants to, to, uh, to refine their, their, their proposed, their proposal.
So moved.
Comprehensive proposal.
Okay, now, can everybody stop talking so that Paul could repeat that so I could hear it?
So, it would be to defer the, uh...
For a meeting?
The matter to a future meeting, you can pick one. Um, and then, um, direct staff to work with the applicants to, to, uh, to refine their plan and come up with a comprehensive proposal for the council.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you, do you follow what he's saying then? So, he'll work the details out with you before it comes back to us, it'll be a little easier to explain it next time around.
And who made the motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Discussion ends with possible, possible action. Changes zoning forty-four twenty-four South KK Avenue.
That's why we had the public hearing on tonight.
Don't we gotta do an action now?
That's why it's on the agenda. That, that was the public hearing that was held tonight, so if they want to direct you to...
I would be directing the city attorney to prepare the, or donate the ordinance.
I will move on now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Changes zoning for forty-four thirty South Kansas Avenue.
I'll move on that one as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Pointers to committees, commissions, and boards? None. Correspondence to possible action? None. Unfinished business? None. Other business? None. Department hits?
None.
Young Bill?
Two updates for you tonight. Um, PPI program, uh, we recently, uh, completed the funding agreement at the end of the year for the, um, next work plan. Uh, the current work plan, uh, was approved for reimbursement. Um, the Breitner Park, uh, I believe there'll be some updates later in Jan, mid to late January from Luke on that. Um, I think he's still working with Ann, uh, possibly Mark for some updates on that. Uh, following last month's meeting, we are currently moving forward with design on the, uh, two thousand twenty-five street improvement plan, so we'll have, uh, some additional updates in, um, January, but as of right now, we're looking at, uh, preparing plans for, uh, bidding possibly the end of, uh, February. And then stormwater related, uh, we completed our field inspection on our listed discharges, um, and, uh, provided information to Milwaukee Colony, uh, by the end of the year, which will require for the colors. With that, a pass.
Thanks, Bill. Chief Poplar?
Happy New Year. Um, we've been, I've been in the midst of firefighter, um, firefighter interviews for our eligibility list. Uh, we do not have a current opening, but as I stated in previous, um, council meetings, we like to have a, uh, valid and current eligibility list, so we have, uh, as of fi, four thirty PM today, we have, we were over halfway done with our interviews, so, um, that's good. It's good to see the, like I said, the faces come through, it's good to see the number of applicants, and it's goo, it's nice to see the number of applicants that are paramedic licensed or in, in paramedic class along with all their fire certificates. Um, and then just real quick, um, at the beginning of our meeting, your, the fire department and the police department, um, responded to a room and contents, um, kitchen fire, a full assignment fire in our city on Vermont Avenue. Um, damage pretty much sustained to the room of origin, except for the amount of smoke, um, no fatalities.
Was it the back of the house, was it?
What's that?
It was the back of the house, was it?
Vermont, no, no, nope. Um, so everyone, every, everyone was safe, there were no victims, no, no casualties. Uh, that's what you heard probably as the, the meeting, meeting was started, so, um, departments from Milwaukee, Cuyahoga, um, Oak Creek, ourselves, our police department, so that's, that was what went on, EPW. Due to the temperatures and the water on the ground, they were all salting as well, so, um, there's your departments out, out on the streets working tonight, and with that, a pass.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Hunter? Thank you, Chief. Ann?
Um, sewer bills will be, they're at the printer right now, we're just going through and verifying them. They should go out in the mail this week. Um, we've had a busy tax season, and again, taxes are due by January thirty-first, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ann. Paul?
Um, happy New Year to all, and, uh, just, I will reserve most of my comments for the closed session, but otherwise, just wanted to let you know I will be out of the office next week for my first vacation in two years.
Denied.
Should have sent an email.
Exactly.
Mark?
I don't owe anybody anything, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, happy New Year to everyone, and, um, other than that, I'll reserve for the closed session.
Thanks. Steve?
I'll pass this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Don?
I was not surprised to hear the, um, city attorney make this statement. It's the same difference. Yes, you did.
It's on video.
And with that, a pass.
Thanks, Don. Debbie?
Just happy New Year to everyone.
Sarah?
I have nothing this evening.
Sean?
Uh, happy New Year. Um, it is exciting to, if you're watching social media, there's something developing coming. Uh, our Coroner Restaurant up the road.
Didn't hear nothing about it.
So, there's the, and, and other establishments, so it's gonna be a good year, and I'm hoping we can work out some arrangements for people interested in developing our community.
Thanks. All I have is happy New Year, and we're going to the closed session. Ann?
So, we will need a motion to adjourn to close session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation... considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The item for discussion is the city administrator's performance evaluation. And under Wisconsin State statute nineteen eighty-five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, negotiating a development agreement with Wixson Inc., thirteen oh six East Bolivar Avenue. Also move.
Second.
Yep, hang on, get this in here. Alderman Calderon?
Aye.
Alder, our council president of fire?
Aye.
Alderman Brechner?
Aye.
Alderman Warawa?
Aye.
Alderman Damon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Wage increases as a nonrepresented employee starting twelve twenty twenty twenty-four and six twenty twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We are adjourned.